I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is Thursday, I, no, it's not Thursday, it's Thursday, November 10th, 2022. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have the August 18th minutes for approval. Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
In the second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's unanimous.
Yeah, we kind of waited long enough to do that, we should do it.
And we have the September 1st, 2022 minutes for approval.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
In the second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. And then we have the September 8th, 2022 minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Seconded.
In the second, and all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, that's unanimous. And we have the September 29th minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. And I think this is the last one. We have October 4th, 2022.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Seconded.
In the second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next on the agenda, is it 7:05?
7:02.
7:00, we've got to wait three minutes. Make a motion to start. We just have to wait the three minutes for 7:05, that's when the meeting is posted for, so, the hearings, and we'll just have to wait that three minutes.
Yeah, 7:01.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we should hire a mine for these delays.
Who controls that, you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't kill it, that's good. One more minute.
It's like a nice ice cream.
Yeah.
You watch football, huh?
Yeah.
Get up to some football game tonight. It's so hard now that it's on Amazon Prime. Two weeks ago was the only good game when it was Tampa Bay, somebody, and it wasn't even a good game. That's the longest two minutes in my life.
I know. Probably the front, yeah. I saw you, but I think Mr. Riley suggested. Okay, 7:05. So first on the petitions, is the petition of Richard Donadio?
Donadio.
Donadio. 339 Lywood Street. Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at 7:05 PM at the Abington Town Offices. 500 Glenwood Way, on the petition of Richard Donadio, 339 Lywood Street, for a variance under section 175-292, to allow a 19-foot front yard setback, and a special permit under section 175-26-C for accessory structure over 875 square feet. The property is located on Assessors Map 13, lot 76, in the R40 zone. Mr. Donadio, you want to come up and introduce yourself and give us your name, address, please?
Rick Donadio, 339 Lywood Street, Abington.
Just explain what you're looking to do.
So basically, I'm looking to put an addition on my garage. And I happen to live on the corner, which I guess is two front yards. So the garage can't go out towards the street because the current structure does not meet the setback requirements already. I can't go forward because the, it gets closer to the property line as I go forward, so that would narrow the gap. So I'm basically looking to stay at the same distance away from the street and just go straight back with the garage.
So, and you're looking for a variance?
Yes.
Or the set side, well, actually, it's front yard setback.
Well, it's my side yard, but it's, it's called a front yard.
Because it's on the street.
Yes, I put in for a 19-foot variance, but it's probably going to be more like 20. Just to be safe, I put down 19.
And you're looking for a special permit, for, what's the purpose of the special permit?
Ah, because the square footage will end up over 875.
Questions?
This also includes a new driveway.
Yes, it does.
And relocated sheds somewhere.
Yep.
Is the, the existing driveway going to stay, you're going to have two driveways, is that the point?
Yeah.
Why is, why is that? Why wouldn't you get rid of one of the driveways?
Well, if I, if I still have a garage door on the front of the house, it wouldn't make sense not to have a driveway, driveway attached to it.
So is the garage, so is it going to be a drive-through garage?
I guess, I guess, yes, it, I guess you could drive through it, yeah. I probably won't use it as a drive-through, but you could potentially drive in the front driveway and then drive out to back.
Right. Any more questions?
Not really a good picture of what you're building. I mean, not really a stint, building. What do you got here?
I got a copy, I bet if you need it.
And what's the height going to be on it?
25.
May we accept in this drawing?
I don't know, that's going to be up to us, I guess, right?
It has to be real drawing, what he wants.
Generally, we require more than just a sketch. Did you make that sketch, or was it?
No, my contractor did.
He did, your contractor. We have, we have a plan, no, but.
Plan is stamped.
Yeah. If you guys are looking for more detail on the actual.
Is it just going to be storage space above, like on the?
Yeah, just like a platform that I could climb to with a ladder and put, you know, we don't have a basement in the house. We don't have an attic, we don't have much storage space. I have an abundance of vehicles, two of which currently won't fit in my current garage because they're too tall. We have ATVs, quads. I still have a lot of my stuff in my mother's house, in her garage, and she's probably going to be selling soon because she's getting old. So I'm looking to be able to put everything inside of my garage. Not everything, but the majority of my stuff that has to be stored inside, especially the ATVs, possibly one of the trucks, maybe muscle car.
Have no rooms or anything on the second floor?
No, no.
Yeah, I think we're going to need real plans for something like this. And how, how many square feet is the house and the addition?
I don't know how many the house is, the addition is 890.
The plan, the plan, this plan, it would be nice if it showed square footage, how much square footage it was going to be, that sort of thing.
Okay.
I agree with Rich, this is kind of lacking in, in terms of details, usually.
See how it would look, the rest of the structure.
Right.
And have you got the okay for a driveway? I mean, you got to cut the curb and all that.
No curb to cut.
Oh, okay.
It's just, I have crushed rock out on the, to the roadway, basically.
I think the, is that the case, Chris, or?
No, after a new driveway onto the subdivision, I'll have you get a sign off in the highway department.
Okay.
Even though there's no curb to cut, you still have any entrance on the road, so it will be required.
Okay.
I think we just need a little more detail. If this is a variance too, correct?
It is a variance, yeah.
For the setback issue on the, the front, yeah.
So I think more information we got, get on that is better.
Yeah, so, so for a variance, there's certain things you have to meet in order for us to actually consider whether or not we can grant the variance. That includes, there are circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography, which especially affect the land or structure in question, but which do not affect generally the zoning district. So, in your case, I don't think it has anything to do with soil conditions.
No.
Or topography is flat, is, I don't know if topography.
Basically, it has to do with me being on the corner.
The shape, the shape of the lot, yeah.
Yes.
And that due to the circumstances, especially affecting the land or structure, literal enforcement of the, of the provision of the zoning ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. So you have to show us that you have some sort of hardship that we should need to take into consideration.
Financially, it would be more, instead of me adding on to the garage, to do something else would be financially more money, to put up a, a different idea forward. It would probably involve moving the house at that point.
Well, I'm looking at the house too, that the way it's sitting on the lot is kind of suspicious, you know, you know, not perfectly straight or whatever. I mean, that's, that's worse than the favor. And you don't have a basement, correct?
I don't have a basement, I don't have an attic.
All right, so the way I see it is, I mean, it's a strange-looking, proposed garage addition. Kind of is this way and goes that way.
It's to stay with the lot line.
It is, okay.
Because if, the front of my garage is 13 feet from the lot line, 13.32, the back's 20.3. So I'm keeping that 20.3.
By angling a little bit?
Yeah, I'm not looking to get any closer to the, the street, I'm just looking to stay at that 20.3.
I suppose if they made it, if they made that addition square to the house, the driveway would be bigger. It would be off, yeah. Get into his pool area. Yeah, right, exactly, right, good point, so.
And to keep it, the distance off the pool, we had to keep it at that angle.
Just a strange-looking, you know, you go this way, then you go that way. But it is the, the property itself, the angle of the house, no basement. But I think we want, I think we want to see more, you know, the actual.
A plan of, the building.
The height of the building, the plan of the building.
The square footage, that's.
Professionally done.
So what do you want me to do?
Go back to your, do you have an architect that's going to help you with this, or is it just you guys going to?
I don't know, if, do you want me to get an architect?
Yes, generally, how, what we.
That's what we'd like to see, yeah.
That's what it will take, okay.
Well, I'm not saying that, but.
We're not saying it's going to get done, but just for, for our information, I think it's going to benefit you to give us more information.
The more information we have, the better off it is for you, because it's a variance.
Okay.
So this, this, this helps, and we'd like to see what you're building too, because we don't know what it's going to look like when you have the house here, when you have the garage here. Is the ground going to be above the house, or is it going to be lower?
It should be at the same height.
Yeah, but we don't know.
We don't know that, so we would like to see that, so we can
Okay.
determine whether or not it's, it's something that's going to fit in the neighborhood, that sort of thing.
What do I do, do I have to book another meeting?
No, we can continue, if you agree, we can continue it to our next, to our December meeting. If you can get, if you can get a plan drawn by then.
I'll get one drawn by then.
And into us.
Yeah.
And then we could finish up the hearing.
How will I get it into you, what do I do?
Drop it off at the building office?
Okay.
Are you done for right now, or?
I guess if I have to.
You can come back, no, I'm just going to open it up to the other people in the audience, so.
That's fine.
Is there anything else you guys are interested in, is there anything else you see?
We can bring them back up anyways, but, yeah. So once you have a seat, and then we'll, I'm going to open up the audience and see if there's anybody else in the, anybody else in the public who wants to speak on this? Ma'am, and then we'll have Chris, yeah. Name and address, please.
Linda D'Amio, 9 Diane Circle.
What's your name, please?
I'm sorry, what?
What's your name, please?
Linda. Is this working? I'm sorry. Linda D'Amio, 9 Diane Circle, Abington.
Thanks.
Okay, we're neighbors of Rick's family. So I had a question, there's a shed, where is the shed going? Moving the shed, is the shed moving to another part of the building, or the area?
It moves to another part of the area.
And can you tell us where?
Probably the other side of the command.
Left, right? Can you show me on the sketch, what works best?
If, if.
We got it up there, actually.
If the shed makes the transfer, which I don't know that it will, but if it does, possibly over here.
Okay, so you're not sure of the shed yet?
I'm not 100% sure of the shed.
Okay.
I don't know that it will make the transfer.
Is it a necessary thing?
Is the shed?
That's what I'm saying, is it something you absolutely would want?
I don't absolutely want it, but I have it, I'd like to keep it, if I can't keep it, then I don't really care.
Okay, okay. So we were talking about what happens to the old garage, are you going to be building up to make it meet the other one? Okay, and that will be in the sketch?
That's why we want, that's why we want to plan to see what, yes.
And the garages can connect, if necessary? If not, and it doesn't connect, what would you do with the old garage? Would it be storage, a room, or have you thought that out? Is it still going to be a garage?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just an addition to the garage.
It's addition to the garage.
Okay. Future projects, anything beyond this that you're thinking of?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's really, I'm not sure that's really a project.
I don't know, that's why I wanted to ask. Okay, so I'm okay with what is going on. I'd like to thank Bill for helping us out, Bill Mullen. Explained a lot of technical terms, we had no idea where they were at. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Anybody else? Oh, Chris, I'm sorry, you.
Yes, just a clarification, when he submits plans, you want elevations and floor plans? I just elevations with the board can see what it looks like.
Yeah, because we really don't see.
Do you want floor, your floor plans too?
Yeah, we really don't see the elevations, yeah.
Both, yeah.
You want elevations or you don't?
Yeah.
So elevations?
And a floor plan.
Floor plan?
Mr. Riley?
Why is this not a finding? Instead of there?
I'm not representing him, I mean, this is what the petition is this, in front of us, so.
So on the, just elevations and floor plans?
Mm-hmm. For the garage structure itself.
What about the house?
No, we don't, I don't, well, we will need them for the, yeah, just, yeah, for the house as well, yeah.
So you want the house and the garage?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, do you have anything else right now, or?
No, so what do I, just come back to next month's meeting?
So we're going to ask you to sign something, right? If you agree to continue it to the 10th, we're going to take a vote to continue it. And then we're going to have, and then Bill will have you sign something saying that you agree to the continuance, and then you'll come back on the 10th, yes.
Okay.
Is it the 10th?
I believe it is the 8th.
The 8th, I'm sorry, December 8th.
December 8th?
Yes.
7 o'clock?
Yep, you'll be first on the, the agenda.
Probably like, more like 7:05.
7:05, you saw what happened tonight.
Why don't we make it 7:01?
Be here at 7, you'll be fine. Oh, you do, okay. All right, so do we have a, a motion to continue this to December 8th at 7:05?
I move that we continue this matter till December 8th at 7:05.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, so we'll see you in a month. And get your stuff in beforehand, because we would like to review it.
Okay, just bring it in.
Bring it in and leave it, yeah, leave it at the building office.
Five copies, five copies?
Uh, six.
Six.
Three, three copies.
That is it for tonight?
That is it for you for tonight, yeah.
Thank you.
So, people in the audience who, this is your official notice that the meeting is next month at 7:05, if you wish to come back.
Do we get a copy of the plans if we're going to?
You can look at them at the building office, yeah, yeah. So I'm sure if you email him and ask him if the plans are there, he'll let you know, and you can come down and take a look at them, yeah, okay?
But he's an excellent.
He's an excellent guy. Most times. All right. Next on the agenda is the petition of point sign, viewpoint sign in awning, 259 Barackton Avenue. Yep. Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of viewpoint sign in awning for a sign waiver, section 175-58-3, to allow two internally illuminated signs on the south elevation of the building, located at 259 Barackton Avenue. The property is located on Assessors Map 15, lot 19, in the HZ zone.
Hi, doing I'm Sean Donovan, I'm with Viewpoint Sign and Awning. So what we have here is, we've installed one sign elevation, we're able to permit that. For the second elevation, there's a second set of Duncan illuminated channel letters. And then, there's, and it's also a second set of signs, but they're non-illuminated, that would read, "Abington Runs On Duncan." So we're looking for a waiver for those two signs.
So this was already done over, right, it's all set?
Yeah, yeah.
It looks good.
Oh, thanks.
Any questions?
No, I mean, these are just going facing the street, correct? The other, the other side?
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure what street that is. Yeah, over the window.
Is that just a roll-up door?
No, the, the front, you're talking about the front elevation?
Yeah, the, the one that says, "Abington Runs On."
No, you know what it is, it's a, it's like sign, it's like a.
Oh, it's like a vinyl sign?
Siding, Brinkley just did it, yeah.
Yeah. They call it an accent wall.
It just kind of looked like a roll-up door.
Yeah, it's the brand's experience, you know, it's like a, I mean, it doesn't really bring people in, they're already in the drive-through lane, it's just more aesthetic, you know, the experience.
Yeah, let's get, get Brinkley. I was looking at the other day, actually, the siding, the clad siding.
Yeah, and they have artwork options too, like sometimes towns, if it's wording and it goes over the signage, you can do like a cup icon or a donut icon. There's some, you know, some artwork you can do as an alternate, but it's.
Okay, so for us to grant a waiver, there's a couple of things you have to hit as far as your presentation. So number one is a literal enforcement of the provisions of the signed bylaw, would involve hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant, in that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the signed bylaw. So I guess what you need to show us is some kind of hardship.
Hardship would be, it's, it's on the main road, it's got great visibility, you know, and it would be an opportunity for the franchisee to bring more business in.
So without it, your business is not as good as it?
Yeah, yeah, it would, it would lack. I mean, I'm in the sign business, so I tell you, signs sell more product, and it's, for the most part, it's true. And the Duncan donuts are sort of designed that way, they're market-driven, so, you know, even before they get to the construction team, you know, they've, they've done tests and, you know.
Oh, sorry, in your letter, you said, if you're coming east on Barackton Avenue, you don't really see.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and that's kind of their, their, their approach. I mean, and sometimes too, like if we go over the signage, we could turn that wall into artwork, so it doesn't classify as sign. So, you know, there's a way, there's, there's ways around it, but, you know, the, having the Duncan on that side model, it would, would be important.
And, and the second criteria is that at least one of the two following conditions exists. The proposed signage is designed to be harmonious with and not harmful, injurious, or objectionable to existing or future uses in the area. I'm not even going to read the second one, because this one, I think you can justify.
Yeah, well, run that, say that to me again.
The proposed signage is designed to be harmonious with and not harmful, injurious, or objectionable to existing or future uses.
Well, I don't think it would cause any injury or.
But it's time I would.
Yeah, yeah, if you.
Looks like it matches, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it kind of speaks for itself. It's a great question.
All right, anything else?
Uh, no, just.
So I'm going to ask you to sit down for a second, see if there's anybody else in the public who has any input. Anybody else who has any input on this particular petition? If not, you can bring it back, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, but I'd like to say that, like you said, these are all being done over, and they're pretty much being done the same.
Yeah.
Like Brinkley has the same thing, and it looks good too.
Okay.
It looks more professional. Is there any pressure on the franchisee to have the signage be consistent?
Yeah, there are brand standards, and they, they do, you know, the franchisees have a commitment to meet that. And it's always, signs are always the last to come to a project, I mean, you know, I'm sure the plan is on the building department, but signs, they don't set the cap in most municipalities. So they've already invested in top of it. The building, the building department has proved and remodeled. You know, had they known they were going to get, like, let's say, the size of that tower, they probably would have redesigned the designs, but it never works that way. It's, you know, the brand kind of seasoning it how it's done.
Okay. All set?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the board, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we can act on the petition. This takes a majority vote, so we'll need two out of three.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the petition of viewpoint sign in awning for a sign waiver, 175-58-3, to allow two internally illuminated signs on the south elevation of the building, located at 259 Barackton Ave. The property is located on Assessors Map 15, lot 19, in the HC zone.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the petition of Katrina Sun, 57 Jamison Street. Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at 7:15 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Katrina Sun, 57 Jamison Street, for special permit, section 170, 175-32I, to incorporate an in-law into second-story addition, that has already been approved. Located at 57 Jamison Street, the property is located on Assessors Map 63, lot 75, in the R30 zone. Welcome back, Ms. Sun, you were here before. Yeah, you too. So why don't you introduce yourself and?
Katrina Sun, 57 Jamison Street. So last time I was here, I think you talked about needing a special permit, and because the kitchen on the second floor was not noticed, the first time I came in to apply for the permit, I applied for the wrong permit, so it was not, it's been approved for the variance and the finding that I was already here for, but not for the kitchen. So I'm here back for that, to see if I can get that approval for the kitchen. Same plans, nothing's changed.
So this is basically what you're looking for, an accessory apartment as an in-law apartment, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, I was here, when you had mentioned it last time, when I was here, like, oh, I think you might need a special permit for this. Turns out I did.
Questions? Questions from the board members?
So basically, you're building the second floor for an in-law.
My mother, yeah. Want her to be able to maintain some amount of autonomy, you know.
So there's a coup, there's a couple of things in this, um, this provision of the by law. You have to have at least three off-street parking spaces. Do you have three off-street parking spaces?
I obviously don't know.
That's, that's one of the requirements. And the other is that the maximum floor size for the apartment not exceed the lesser of nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling. So the apartment upstairs can't be the same size as the.
When I spoke with Mary Ann, she's like, this will go through no problem.
Am I reading, that's correctly, Chris, that's right?
Um, I'll have to pull that up. Yes, you are reading it right, um, but you could also talk about that area. There is some, um, internal, internal structures, staircases and stuff like that. But it doesn't quite add up.
So if, if it's, if it's nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the living area, whichever is less.
Existing dwelling is not nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, I mean, I used to live in those things, I know what you're talking about.
It definitely looks like three parking spaces too, with the, uh, with the garage and then.
I mean, those houses are very unusual.
My driveway holds three cars.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what.
Oh, okay, I meant like on the street.
No, 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 actually, in your yard, yes.
Oh, okay, I know.
If your driveway would hold three cars and that's satisfied. Yeah. I guess the other, the bigger question is the nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the.
But those houses down there are very small. I mean, I used to live there myself when I was a child and they're like, what, one bedrooms, I think?
I mean, technically, it's two bedrooms, but the.
But if it's, if it's nine, if, let's say that downstairs is nine hundred square feet.
It's not.
The upstairs can't be nine hundred square feet, it's got to be fifty percent of that nine hundred square feet. Because it's going to be whichever is less.
But that's a requirement.
And that's, 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 I think, specifically so you can't have just a regular two-family in that.
Yeah, all right, I see that, yeah.
All right, it's an, it's technically an in-law apartment, so it's not supposed to be a full apartment.
It's not a separate entrance, though.
Right, doesn't have to be, I don't think.
Do we have plans for this?
Yeah, this one.
I mean, the real plans, do we have, did they make up plans for this, the original ones? Or is this just there right here? Is it?
That's it.
Yeah.
I think we had it before.
It was a lot of ages for this.
Yeah, we gave the variance for that.
Yeah, for that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we gave the variance for that and the special permit.
Variance and finding, yeah.
And a fine, right, but. So.
So where do we go from here?
I, I don't know, I, I have an issue with it being, I don't think it can mirror the downstairs and be the exact same size based upon what the by law says. I don't think so. So maybe you can rework the plan so it looks.
I mean, if fifty percent.
Again, those houses are so small, though, I mean, those.
It would not be a big enough living space if it was fifty percent of the existing.
Yeah. Yep.
So Vision, the assessors records have the first floor living area, five thirty-four, and then the basement is also five thirty-four, so it would be another five thirty-four on the second floor, if I'm not mistaken. So if you added the basement and the first floor, you'd have a thousand, and then the second floor would only be half of that.
Would be half of that.
Satisfied with fifty percent.
Aren't you, are you adding more to the house though downstairs? I mean, the, the original house, you added more to it?
So for the stairwell, so that was, that was the variance, yeah.
But that doesn't count, right? Stairwell?
It says, uh, floor area of the principal building, so, um, again, basement's whether it's finished or not, it's still five thirty-four, and then the first floor's five thirty-four, so.
So you have, so you meet the.
So it, it, it depends on if you want to split the here or not, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, then the staircase going upstairs will take away part of the second floor, so that shrinks it down.
I may have a second egress to the second, because basically this is going to become a two-family, in essence, so I'm making them put a, a second egress out there.
Okay.
Part of the, if this gets approved.
But it's not going to be a two-family, it'll be an in-law.
No, but, um, my code doesn't differentiate between the two, so I'm going to make them put a horizontal assembly between and a second egress.
Okay.
Twenty years from now.
Yeah, but.
But as far, as far as your special permit, if it's issued, it's only for an in-law. It's, and so only a relative can live there.
Yeah, no, that's the only.
When you sell the property, that special permit is extinguished at that point in time, so. If somebody else wants to use that, they'd have to come back and get a special permit as well. And there's also a yearly affidavit that you have to file saying that the person living in the dwelling is a relative.
Okay, I mean, for my purposes right now, it's like, that's, that's it. My mother, having, having a place for her to be.
Okay, any other questions of the petitioner? If not, I'm going to ask you to sit down and see if there's any other people in the, uh, the public. Anybody else have any input? If not, so Chris, you are satisfied that the square footage issue is?
I'm satisfied that, uh, the by law says floor area doesn't differentiate between finished and unfinished.
Right.
Okay.
For life safety and fire safety, so the horizontal assembly and second egress.
But that's something you all, that's something you all require, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Glad you were here.
Yeah, because it's, uh, that's a tough one. Like I said, those buildings are, those houses are really small.
Yeah. All right, so nobody else in the, uh, public has any questions? We can bring it back to the board and have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so the hearing's closed. What do you guys want to do?
As long as we keep the floor area thing, I think this is, since she meets the affidavit requirements, I, I don't have any issue with this.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion, um, on the petition of Katrina Sun, fifty-seven Jamison Street, for a special permit, one seventy-five dash thirty-two dash I, to incorporate an in-law apartment into the second-story addition that has already been approved, located at fifty-seven Jamison Street. The property is located on assessors map sixty-three, lot seventy-five, in the R thirty zone.
Any with a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Chris, save the day for us there. Good.
Okay, next on the agenda is the petition of Abington Investments LLC, forty-eight Lincoln Street. The Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven twenty P. M. At the town offices, five hundred Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Abington Investments LLC at forty-eight Lincoln Street for a special permit, one seventy-five dash thirty-five, to raise and replace a single-family house within the floodplain in Wetlands Protection District. The property is located on assessors map fifty-two, lot ninety-one, in the R thirty zone.
Thank you, Mr. Buride. My name is attorney Sean Riley of five hundred Washington Street in Abington Center. Uh, with me tonight is Glenn The Point Junior, sitting in the rear of the, the audience, who is the principal of Abington Investments LLC. Uh, we are here tonight for, as the notice mentioned, a special permit to do work within the local floodplain wetland protections overlay district. Um, there is an existing single-family house on this property. Uh, it's a residential zone. The house, if you've gone by it, you may have seen the red X on the front. Do not enter. It's in a, it's an unsafe condition, um, and it needs to be just removed and taken down. So in order to go through that process, we needed to get a special permit from this board, uh, but before that, we also needed to go to the conservation commission, because there's a river that runs right on the property line on the, if you're looking at the house, it's on the left side, which is also the east side. So we did go to the conservation commission, Glenn and I, and their engineer, Strongpoint Engineering. We submitted the plan that Strongpoint Engineer, uh, put together. A lot of detail on that, uh, as required by the conservation commission. Conservation Commission, we had two meetings with them. Uh, it was also submitted to D E P, and that was approved on October twenty-fifth, the order conditions. So we wanted to get that done before we came here to this board. They looked at everything, the grading, riverfront protection, um, in the house, what we're doing now, I think you can see on the plans, is we are taking, the existing house, the driveway is located, if you're looking at the house, that are far left, only a couple of feet off the riverbank. We're removing that and putting the driveway as far away as we can from the property. So trying to move things away from the river, use the lawn area, natural growth, uh, to absorb rainwater, storm water, protect the river. We're not taking down any trees along the river, we're not touching anything along the river. So everything's, uh, basically being improved here. Out in the very rear of the property, there's an existing, we think it's probably an old basketball court. There's a big, there's a paved area in the back right corner, along with an old shed. Those are both being removed, and that will be replaced with some wetlands planting, some evergreens, uh, all natural. It's got, we're removing some of the pavement off this property. Then that result is, it'll actually be less impervious surface when we're done with our work than there is existing. Also, I just wanted to add, the current structure, the current house violates zoning setbacks. The new house will conform to zoning setbacks. So the only zoning relief we need is just because of the fact that we're located within the overlay district. So for all that reasons, if you have any, uh, questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but, I think we've satisfied everything, including conservation, which was our first jump.
It would appear that the, uh, the new plan would be slightly closer to the river on, uh, the other one, it'll be slightly closer to the river, I don't know that that matters for setback or anything, but. Is there any issue with that?
No, we discussed this at, at, um, conservation. What you can't see, because we have the, on the plan that we submitted and we submitted to conservation, the gray area is the new house, and you can see the ghosted image of the old house under it. So you can't see that. The, basically, the edge of the new house is pretty much aligned with the, the closest edge of the old house. There's actually a, a back stairway set on concrete that is right under the edge of our new house.
Okay.
So the biggest thing we're doing is, as I mentioned, is taking that large chunk of pavement, the current driveway, which is only about twenty feet off the river, and just removing that. And that will be all vegetation now in that area. The driveway goes to the far side, uh, up further up Lincoln Street. Um, we specifically oriented, oriented the house so it's perpendicular, sorry, parallel with the street, because every other house up and down that side of the street is parallel, so.
It's going to be a single-family home, right?
Correct.
I've driven by that other one, it's, every day it's a mess.
Yeah, Glenn has talked to a few of the neighbors and they're very happy to see that something new will be there.
Is there any issue with the, uh, the water elevation increasing because of the fact that the house is bigger or any of that sort of thing?
No, in fact, i- if you walk the lot, when you walk off of Lincoln Street, you know, the, the, the topography is at the, basically at Lincoln Street, and then you can see by the, the lines, it drops off significantly down to a lower backyard. So the house is taking advantage of the higher topography on back. It's, I think you're asking water table, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, because the backyard itself is pretty much going to remain where it is. We're actually adjusting some of the side yard topography, if you noticed, if you don't mind me. This was one of the elements we brought to the conservation. When it rains, right, it hits the pavement and it just sheets down, and you can see it slopes right down to the river, these lines are a slope.
Yeah, nice.
So what we're doing now.
Whoa, whoa.
Sorry. I didn't touch it, but I guess it.
They are pretty neat, though, aren't they, there it is?
Okay, so, those little lines right here.
Yeah.
You see, when it rains now, the water, instead of going to the river, we have it coming back along the side of the house to the backyard. So we're using the yard as a filtration system, um, so the grass and alone basically treats the water and absorbs the water. So it's a better thing for the river, and it'll be a nicer property.
So no variance is needed or anything like that for the new property? You get plenty of?
Right, yeah, we have the setbacks drawn up there also.
All right.
Any other questions for Attorney Riley?
Forty feet off instead of twenty-six point seven.
I'm going to open it up to them. Anybody in the, uh, yeah, Chris?
For you, Mr. Chairman, counsel, um, your site plan by Strongpoint states that this is going to be in a flood, special flood hazard area, so you're going to do a slab on grade and be able to provide an elevation certificate on that?
This is, it's in a, it's in the local floodplain overlay district, and there is a FEMA flood zone that's back in the very backyard, but that, we're not, we're not building in that area, right?
So you're outside of that?
We're outside the FEMA zone.
Engineer is going to have to show me that he's outside of that floodplain, because in his narrative on the, uh, site plan, he's stating that it is within the special flood hazard area.
The, um, the FEMA flood zone is shown on the plan in the blue, in the very back, you see that?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay. Yeah, we will, we'll do whatever you need to make sure we go forward.
That's what I'll be looking for.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Is it going to be a basement? Is it going to be a basement or no basement?
It's going to be a, we're going to set up, so it's just a walkout of the back.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's what Sean was saying about taking advantage of the grade.
Yeah, yeah.
That way we don't walk right up. It's going to be, it'll be a colonial, found this bush on the front and garage on the side.
Excellent.
Should be nice.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? If not, I'm going to bring it back to the board, can we have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. We can take a vote on the petition, so.
This would be a nice improvement to the.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
That's a, I drive by that.
Yeah.
I think every day, that's my way to.
Two to four times a day, I go by that.
Yeah. All right, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the petition of Abington Investment LLC at forty-eight Lincoln Street for a special permit, one seventy-five dash thirty-five, to razz and replace a single-family house within the floodplain in Wetlands Protection District. The property is located on assessors map fifty-two, lot ninety-one, in the R thirty zone.
Second. Can we just reference the plan here too, that, uh, from Strongpoint?
In substantial conformance with the submitted plan?
Yeah, substantial conformity with the submitted plan. Yes, Steve, is that all right? Okay, all right, do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Well, good luck.
Okay, this one's yours, Dave, because I've been here for this meeting, so.
Sounds a bit confusing too, after.
You've been reading what, um, these things kind of. So this, this next one, I was not here last meeting, so these three guys are going to be the, uh, the voting members. I did watch the, I did watch it on TV, but I think they were here, so.
Super, thank you.
Dave's going to run me to get this one.
Did you have to read the public hearing again, or we already did it?
No, you already did it, so just, just say what can.
All right, I guess we're going to open it up to the continuation of the public hearing for the, uh, nine Hunt, nine Hunts Pond Lane, uh, appeal for a commissioner's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have four things on the docket here according to our application. Um, one is the appeal of the denial of the building permit for the cabana. The second is a request for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-two I The second is a request for a special permit under 175-32-I for an accessory, to allow an accessory apartment. Number three is a special permit, much like we just granted previously, which is to build within the floodplain. And number four is a waiver of environmental impact statement. I know I went over this in detail with you last month, and I'm happy to go into as much detail as you wanted to, again, but just to go back over quickly, and if I could do it in reverse order, the environmental impact statement waiver and the request for the special permit for the floodplain are pretty much interrelated. We're not building in any wetlands in this area. It is in a local floodplain in Wetland Overlay District, which half the town is in there. This is an 11.4 acre lot. We're, we're basically replacing a small, existing screenhouse cabana with a new, larger screenhouse cabana, again, not in any wetlands. Thus, we are required to ask for the special permit to build in the local overlay, the floodplain overlay, and we're requesting the waiver of the environmental impact statement because we, there's, there's no wetlands involved, and we're basically building in the backyard right off the pool where the existing one is. No topography issues that are gonna affect any neighbors, because we're on an 11-acre parcel. The other two items are the appeal of the denial of the building permit, which was initially a building permit for an accessory apartment, not an accessory apartment, sorry, an accessory structure, a cabana, a prefabricated cabana. I submitted copies of the floor plan to you, and copies of the plans that Mr. Carmichael and I, I'm sorry, the letters that we've exchanged. And alternatively, there is the special permit for the in-law apartment under 175-32. The difference, obviously, being the in-law apartment, the cabana would have to be revised before it was purchased, to put a bedroom in there and to put a kitchen in there. Right now, the accessory building, the cabana, does not have a bedroom or a kitchen, thus, it doesn't meet the definition of dwelling under our bylaws, because a dwelling needs five feet to be there. The building department, I won't rehash, but was concerned that it had potential to become a dwelling in the future, and our point was, there are a lot of structures in town that have the potential to become a dwelling, whether it be a room above a garage, or an unfinished basement, or things like that, a dwelling unit, I should say. The, the in-law apartment would require, the owner would be the same exact footprint, but the cabana would be revised, so that the, that recreation room would be removed, that would become a bedroom, we'd have to add a closet in there. And then the kitchenette, that basically has the refrigerator and a microwave, would have to have a stove, range, update a little electric for that purpose, you'd have new plumbing, because the little bar sink would have to be a kitchen sink, things like that. There'd have to be some upgrades done if you were to go that route with the in-law. I think when we left last, there was a question, a discussion, as to, it was our, our opinion, if you, that we applied for both, because there was a decision of which one to do, and, but knowing that Mr. McMenamin or his family would only be able to exercise one of those permits, meaning if he decided to buy the accessory structure as it was originally designed with the recreation room, then he would have to basically forego the in-law apartment, he wouldn't actually record it or exercise it, that would expire. Alternatively, if he goes with the in-law apartment, that would be his decision, he would have to notify the company to update the plans, he would have to file a new building permit application with the building department, showing the in-law apartment. It conforms in all ways, meaning it's below the threshold of 900 feet, and it would be, obviously, a family member, as described in our application. And if he was to make that an in-law apartment, then there, we would not, obviously, ask for a building permit for an accessory structure. That is basically where we left it and where we are, and I am happy to answer questions that'll go into more detail, but I didn't want to tell you what we already talked about.
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff.
It's a nice-looking structure.
Yeah.
Very nice.
We did have Amy take a look at it, and she was very confused by the application, because you're asking for two things for the same project, which is unusual. Like I said before, it's very unusual that, that you'd be coming for, it's almost like you're gonna build a house, but then you wanna put a garage on it. So, we're gonna, we're gonna give you the, the permit, the okay for the house, and then give you the, okay, but maybe you put a, a garage on the house later on. I've never seen this before, I don't know, Andy?
You've been on here longer than I have.
I have never seen...
No, situation hasn't ever raised, and I've been doing this for a long time, and I've never appealed a building permit, and this is nothing personal against Mr. Carmichael or his, his staff, this is just, we're both doing our jobs, trying to figure out what's the way to move forward here. I, I might, I would submit to you, then, if, one way we could resolve this, if the board, let me make it straightforward here, with the in-law apartment application, I think it conforms in all ways. Size, all of the check, it checks all the boxes in the in-law apartment, the plans are there. If the board was to grant a special permit for the in-law apartment, I think, I know Mr. McMenamin would then probably, would exercise that right. He's not gonna use it as his residence, because he only lives there part-time during the year. His, his son lives in the main house, as I wrote in my application, they're snowbirds, they come back, they have a five-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bath house, there's plenty of room for the family now, but this would allow he and his wife to sleep out there if they wanted to. And yet, it would still be used as a pool cabana, well, when the kids are out, the grandkids are out there. So, if the board was inclined to grant the special permit for the in-law, I guess the second thing was, I guess we could offer to withdraw the application, or the, the appeal of the accessory building appeal, if that makes more sense to you.
And what about the assess, what about the actual, I mean, you, you brought us both of them.
Yeah.
So, you just drop in that whole section there, where it was just gonna be a cabana?
That's what I'm saying.
Just take that away, okay?
If, I can't do that until I know that you grant the in-law.
Right, no, I understand that part.
But, yeah, I think that would probably resolve it and make it...
Like I've said before, this is, this is a little different.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it here in my years, that's why I asked Amy.
I understand, procedurally, I had to put it on the table for you.
I understand.
Okay, so I had to apply for both things, and then, you know, if, if you found something that said it didn't comply with the in-law for somehow, which, you know, if I overlook something, and you said it doesn't comply with in-law, then I would have to say that I need to ask for the accessory building permit.
But we, we don't, as a board, we didn't...
You just did it all together, as opposed to coming in and say, appeal the decision, that gets denied, then you have to come back and do it again.
Exactly, because I, I'd just be rehashing the same thing, so we figured, I told Mr. McMenamin, let's put it all on the table, and let's, let's see what the best...
But I think, I think Rich is right, I think you, and you, I think you agree.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you act on one, if you act on one, then the other one goes away.
Right, as long as, I think we go the top tier first, right?
If that's, I think that's probably up to you, which one you want to go first.
Yeah, well, I think it makes sense to do that, because, you know, if it's an in-law apartment, you know, basically it has a bedroom in there, he can still use it, his family can use it as a cabana. Grandpa's not gonna kick the grandkids out if they run in there to get, you know, a juice out of the, out of the, the refrigerator while they're swimming in the pool.
Then, then if he's using it as a cabana and wants to use it as an in-law, it's already done.
Exactly, exactly, we can't do the opposite.
Exactly.
But again, getting back to it, we, as a board, don't want people to come in here and say they want this, but if that doesn't work, we want you to vote on this, too. I just don't think that's, that would be just beyond...
The if, then, sort of...
Yeah, it'd just be a lot of, what, did anybody read this here? Yeah, you wanna?
Yeah.
So...
Well, I think Amy kinda, you, go ahead, Rich, but she kinda...
Well, I'm just saying here about the 175, 48B, do you wanna, does that, does that apply?
What was that? I didn't see that.
Did you give him this book? Yeah, I do.
I think everyone has a copy.
Okay.
Was that...
So, well, are we gonna ask questions of him, or are we gonna discuss it amongst ourselves, or what are we gonna do?
Well, I just wanna bring up all the stuff here first, there's two, two things here.
Okay.
I haven't even given a copy of it, so I don't know what you're talking about.
About the driveway? Bill Inspector?
What about it?
I think you're looking at the one for, the Lindowitz Street.
Am I?
Yeah.
I apologize if I am.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the Lindowitz Street, by the way.
All right, thank you.
Two driveways.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I apologize.
You only have one driveway.
Yeah, we have one, one long driveway, very long driveway.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Sure. So, it would seem to me that we could consider the newest part of this, which is the in-law, and if we deny that, then we can consider the appeal second. And if we grant the in-law, we don't have to even consider the appeal.
Right, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, so procedurally, I think we could address it that way.
I, I would agree to withdraw the appeal.
That's fine.
I mean, I think that's procedurally right, we could, yeah, we're on the same page.
And the concern of the, Mr. Carmichael and company is that it, it, it could be used readily as a in-law apartment, but we should, if, if that's the case, we should call it that and meet the requirements of it.
So, no disrespect to the council, but it looks like a duck and cracks like a duck, it's a duck. So, you can put a huffler in on the counter, and you can put a microwave there, and a mattress on the floor, and it's a dwelling, so I've seen, come to these, so, yes, my intent, my, my first look at it says it was dwelling, and that's why I denied it.
All right.
Yeah.
So, you know now...
This was started before he even, even came on board to Abington, so he got stuck in the middle of it all. And initially, Mr. McMenamin was told he couldn't have an detached in-law apartment, so you had to go with the other version. We, we're able to resolve that, like, yes, you can. So, this is where we are now, and I think we're at the end, the finish line.
So, let's look at one more time the, what the in-law would look like.
Not much different, just...
Yeah, right there up on the screen, yeah.
Bed, a closet, and a, and a kitchen.
So, what it doesn't show is, and I think Mr. Carmichael brought it up last time, we have to have a closet and a bedroom. I mean, technically, you don't have to, you can, you could get amois and things like that, but I'm sure he would probably build one in. The kitchen doesn't obviously show, but there'd be a, he would have to add a stove, and we'd have to upgrade the plumbing and the electric in order to service those needs. It's no longer just a, you know, a bar sink.
All right.
But that would all be now a new building permit application that would go to the building department.
Does it have foundation, or is it on, um...
No, it's, um...
Poles, whatever?
A slab, I mean, I'm sure this...
Oh, slab, okay.
Slab on grade.
Yeah. That will all be submitted and reviewed by the...
So, there's no parking issues or anything on that, that's...
It's, it's right, and, and as long as it's not driveway, who can, who can, who can do it?
All right. Okay, all right.
Guess we'll give a, an opportunity for any one of the, your audience to speak, the public? Anybody like to speak on this?
Just enjoying your night here at the zoning board.
Yeah.
Learning stuff.
You can watch it on TV, too.
All right, any other questions before we...
No questions at all, I don't know.
You all set?
I'm all set.
Have a motion to close the...
Have a motion to close the hearing in this matter?
Wait, a second?
Back to us, second.
All right, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, you...
Do you wanna speak first?
I, I think that what might be the easiest thing, if, if there's a motion to approve the special permit to allow the in-law, per the plan submitted, to approve the special permit to do work on the floodplain, and to waive the environmental impact statement, if that vote is taken, then I would anticipate, I'm gonna then say, I would like to ask that the board accept my request that we waive and withdraw the, um, appeal, thank you, of the building department.
Okay, we got you on film. I gotta lighten it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a co, I didn't bring that, I wanna read the petition thing again, make sure I get it right.
So, we're just going with...
We have any, we should, see if there's any discussion first, but...
Oh, yeah, whatever you want to do.
I don't have any more discussion, I don't have anybody else.
No, I don't have any. I figured we'd make the motion and then discuss it.
Okay, so, my motion is to approve the, part of the petition of Barry L. McMenamin at 9 Hunts Pond Lane for a special permit under 175-32-I, to allow accessory apartment, special permit, 175-35, to allow cabana footing, site prep in the floodplain Wetlands Protection District, and the waiver of the environmental impact statement to construct a, a 140-square-foot prefab cabana, accessory apartment at 9 Hunts Pond Lane, Hunts, geez, Hunts Pond Lane. The property is located on Accessors Map 13, lot 96, in the R30 zone.
You wanna refer, you wanna reference the plans submitted, the same...
Yeah, as, as, in accordance with the plans...
What is it, version B, or a version, uh, hold on.
Well, the, the plans entitled Proposed Accessory Apartment.
Yes, yeah, perfect.